Good evening, welcome to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for October 3rd, 2016, at 6:30 PM. Could we have the roll, please?
Mr. Robinson?
Here.
Mr. Walker?
Here.
Mr. Spohays?
Present.
Mr. Cange?
Here.
Mr. Spinelli?
Here.
Ms. Bailey?
Here.
Ms. Barker?
Here.
Mr. Strike?
Here.
Mr. Spring has been excused, thank you.
Thank you. For the minutes, Monday, August 8th, 2016, could we have a motion to adopt the minutes? Thank you, Mr. Cange, seconded by Mr. Strike. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, those minutes are adopted. Disclosures, Ms. Bailey?
I was not present for the resolutions that were proposed for P&amp;Z, so I will not be able to vote regarding those.
Thank you, Mr. Strike.
No disclosure.
Mr. Walker?
No disclosures tonight.
Mr. Cange?
Yes, I wasn't here for case 2016-0093, so I'm going to abstain from voting on the resolution or if it's altogether consent agenda, if we made a form, I'll abstain from voting on all of them.
Thank you, Mr. Spinelli.
None.
Ms. Barker?
None.
Mr. Spohays?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'd like to disclose that I was, that I left early on cases B and C, 2016-0101 and 20-6, 0103, so I'll be not voting on those items in the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Spohays, and I would disclose that I was recused from case 2016-0093, so will not be voting on resolution 2016-034. Brings us to Special Order of Business number two, Assembly Memorandum and 554, 2016, memorandum requesting the Planning and Zoning Commission to consider some special limitations regarding the rezoning provided in case 2016-0011, that is the subject of AO 2016-075. Good timing, Mr. Anderson. Is there any, I believe we have a memo in our packet that was delivered to us here this evening, anything staff wishes to say to this memorandum from the Assembly?
No, Mr. Chair, other than we were hoping that the Commission would make a decision on the date to hear the remand?
So, but the short story is that we recommended approval of rezoning, I believe unanimously, to the Assembly, and they remanded it to us with a number of suggested special limitations. Now, do you have any insight as to why they didn't just accept the zoning with the special limitations that they suggest we consider?
No, I don't have, I don't have that information.
How, do you have any? So, we've had a petition for rezoning going on a whole long time, and now it's coming back to us. So, this is coming back to us, after we pick a date, it gets a full-blown public hearing and discussion on the case, we get a whole packet all over again, and all that kind of stuff.
Correct.
Okay. Petitioners here, Mr. Anderson, you want to come forward so we can chat about dates? So, I believe the way this works is you cannot have, we need to have minimally 21 days, which means we're into November at that point. We have two meetings scheduled in November, November 7th and November 14th. I would just disclose at this point that, to our knowledge, we might have some absences on the 7th, but I don't know how many, but is there a date there that works better for you, one or the other, in November?
I'm available both those dates. I'm not sure if the land use plan map is going to be in front of you in November also, but if you knew that date, either be on the schedule before then, or not on that day.
Before, yeah, I wish it was before all of us, all of our time. So, I think what we do is we have a land use plan map, public hearing, two weeks from tonight, and then we would have deliberations on one of those November nights. I think at this point, in terms of the attendance, Mr. Cange is not present on the 7th, I am not present on the 7th, Mr. Strike is likely not present on the 14th, but otherwise, we don't have a short board, to our knowledge, on those nights.
So, when there's a remand, and they're asking to consider some special limitations, it's not changing your recommendation for the rezone, it's voting as a group on which special limitations are appropriate?
Well, it's a good question. I would imagine we're being asked to look at the case all over again, but I wonder how it is actually posed to us, that question.
I'll have to figure that out. I don't know if we're going to hear public testimony, since you've already heard it. I think it's just up for the commissioners to reevaluate the case with those five, you know, special limitations that were suggested by the Assembly.
So, we don't know if it's going to be open for a public hearing? The 21 days is just the notice? Why, then?
Yeah.
Even without a public hearing?
We have to do it for a notice for the meeting.
Okay. Well, that's unfortunate, we don't know the answer to that right now. So, the way that I would prefer it is that if it is determined that there's a public hearing, that the public hearing be limited to the items in the memo, but frankly, I would agree with the petitioner that we've heard the public hearing related to this application, so, I don't know. Who makes that decision, as to why it becomes a public hearing or not?
Well, I'll have to check the code and see how it comes back as a remand.
Okay, I'm just going to, go ahead, Mr. Strike.
I believe there was already, through the Assembly, public hearing. That's what derived these recommendations.
Yes, yeah, there has been.
So, there has been public testimony on these items already.
After it heard considerable public testimony, and the proposal for rezoning provided in the planning and zoning case, the Assembly asked P&amp;Z to consider the following special limitation, limitation to five units, limitation to total number of bedrooms, primary access to off-street parking from the alley, height limitation of 35 feet. Okay, so, I don't think there's any expectation in this memo that we reopen the public hearing, and so I think that our request would be that we not, that it be noticed, and that you would be able to come forward and speak to the limitations that were proposed by the Assembly, and how it may or may not affect your proposal. So, does that sound reasonable to you?
Yeah, that sounds reasonable. I just want to make sure that there is a requirement for the 21-day notice period, since there's not a public hearing. I was originally under the understanding that this evening is going to be the deliberation of these special limitations, and that, so I'm a little bit surprised that delaying the actual discussion of it, another month.
Well, and I concur with what you said. I asked one question of staff when I heard this, is why do we have to take this up now and take it up again, and I never heard back. So, I mean, frankly, I'm disappointed that we didn't, and I don't have time to follow up and follow up with this thing. So, I think at this point, I agree with the petitioner, we don't have an application in front of us, so we're not going to take it up tonight, but I think it's a totally fair point, and if there is no public hearing, why we need to do what we're being asked to do.
There is no public hearing, there's another October meeting, right?
There is an October meeting, at this point, you would likely be given the schedule, unless we reorder it, to take it up as a matter before the public testimony on the land use plan map. So, that would be your other option, on October 17th, we have an extension of a case, and we have the land use plan map, and, you know, I'm not getting a good answer as to why we need 21 days. Mr. Strike, are you still in the queue for that before? Why do we need 21 days? Why didn't we take it up tonight? If we can't take it up tonight, can we take it up to 17th? Can you just, Seth, remind me, when did you first submit a application for this case?
It was in October, October of 2015, almost a year ago.
It's getting out of hand. The 21 days is if it's a public hearing, I see nothing in this memorandum saying that it's a public hearing, therefore, can we schedule it for October?
I'll have to check with legal how we handle remands.
Can I have a motion to schedule it for October 17th? Motion for Mr. Walker, seconded by Mr. Spohays. Is that what your motion was, Mr. Walker?
Yes.
In the absence of that date being available, would the petitioner like to state a secondary date for the public hearing, if in fact it needs 21 days, the 7th or the 14th?
The 7th.
Okay. So, the motion is to hear the case on October 17th? I'd frankly like to know, none of this, why legal can't inform the Planning and Zoning Commission of their opinion directly, one way or the other, so we can get on and actually do business, and not have a case linger on for more than a year. At this point, he's going to be out there well over 12 months by the time he's actually through.
So, I think you said November 17th, you mean the 7th?
I mean October 17th.
Oh, okay.
The next available meeting, so that we don't linger on, we've already weighed in on this issue once before. That's how I feel about it, and I think it's frankly a waste of our time. But with that, any objection to the motion? Hearing none, we will do our best to schedule it on October 17th, and I assume staff will be in touch with you if there needs to be another date certain.
Great, I appreciate your assistance.
Yep, thank you. Consent agenda, three resolutions, other than those that were absent, could I have a motion to accept the consent agenda? Thank you, Mr. Strike, seconded by Ms. Barker. Any discussion? And the clerk will figure out, do we have votes for everything that's appropriate? Okay, so all resolutions are approved. Next up is the only case on the evening, case number 2016-0094. Hold this homes request for rezone from Iowa Light Industrial District to B3 General Business District, generally located west of Old Seward Highway, north of Ocean View Drive, and south of Huffman Road. Procedure by which the public may speak to the Commission at its meeting is, after the staff presentation is completed on public hearing items, the Chair will ask for public testimony on the issue. Persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established in the Commission rules of procedure. Petitioners, including all of his or her representatives, receive 10 minutes, and part of this time may be reserved for rebuttal. Representative of groups, community councils, PTAs, et cetera, 5 minutes, and individuals 3. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the Commission, you may also testify once on any issue unless questioned, you may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the Commission. An individual may have appeal rights relating to any action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes, except Commission recommendations to the Assembly which are not appealable, a rezoning is a recommendation to the Assembly. So, with that, could we have the staff report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, this is a request, as you mentioned, to rezone tracks 1, 2, and 3 of Southgate subdivision from I-1 to B-3 in the Huffman Town Center District. Okay, so this rezone is necessary in order to accommodate future medical offices, current offices, and to conform to Town 21 B3 district use standards. As mentioned, the petition site is located south of the Huffman Road, Old Seward Roundabout. The parcels are currently being used as an 18,000-square-foot newly constructed, two-story commercial building, and a 3,200-square-foot two-story office building, built in 2003. Of the 332 public hearing notices that were mailed, no comments were received. The Old Seward Ocean View Community Council submitted a letter of non-objection to the rezone in support of it. The Planning Department finds that the standards 1 through 9 are met, as, I'll just go through them briefly. The rezone will make use of the property for existing and proposed healthcare facilities, will provide service to the community, and fit the concept of town center services. The proposed rezone is located within a town center, as identified on the land use policy map. The proposed rezone is compatible with adjoining districts, so the petition site is surrounded by commercial development on the east, north, and south sides, with railroad tracks adjacent to the west boundary. The petition site abuts a district to the east and to the north, and an I-1 district there to the south. The development site is oriented to the street with visual enhancement landscaping along Old Seward Highway. The B3 district is primarily intended for general commercial uses in commercial centers and areas exposed to heavy traffic, which the petition site meets. The property will be occupied by tenants in the healthcare facility field, compatible with those uses allowed in the B3 district. The rezoning is compatible with surrounding zoning and development. There's already facilities and services capable of supporting the uses allowed by the zone. The site is bounded to the north by Huffman Road Roundabout and fronts to Old Seward, so both these are designated as minor arterial class 3 in the OSH and P. Standard 6, the rezoning of these properties, the B3, will have no adverse impacts upon the natural environment. The proposed rezone is not likely to result in significant adverse impacts upon adjacent land uses, as stated, from I-1 to B3 is consistent with the current development patterns in the area. There is R1A development abutting the site to the west, but that's separated by a 200-foot wide rideaway for the railroad, plus the width of a private airstrip there for the neighborhood. The 2020 comp plan identifies this area as town center, so rezoning that is consistent with the intention to include a mix of retail shopping and other services. Finally, standard 9 is met as a split zone law, is not created by this. So, let's see, you know, the proposed rezone from I-1 to B3 appears to meet the approval criteria outlined in AMC 2103-160E and the general intent and purpose of the B3 district. The proposed rezone meets the intent of the Huffman Town Center, and is congruent with existing commercial uses along Huffman and Old Seward Highway. With that, the Department reckons approval of a rezoning of approximately 2.94 acres from I-1 to B3 for tracks 1, 2, and 3 of Southgate subdivision. The petitioner and petitioner's representatives are here tonight to answer any other questions you may have. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Odell. Couple questions, first, Mr. Strike.
Thank you, and to the Chair. I note on page 29 of the application that if I were to sum this up properly, the reason we're here tonight is because the original answer is to whether or not the use, current use, using medical facilities or the healthcare facilities are allowable under the I-1. And there was some debate, some say yes, some say no. So, we're here tonight to not answer that question, but to rezone the property.
To the Chair, Mr. Strike, that is correct.
Why don't we answer the question?
Well, that's, you're looking at the application, if you ask the Planning Department chiropractor healthcare was never allowed in the old code or new code. So, what they are doing is they're rezoning it to the B3 to allow these uses to happen.
So, there isn't a question, it's not allowed? There's still a question.
There may be a question among the applicant, yes, however, there's no question with the Planning Department.
So, according to the Planning Department, the current use of this property is not a valid use for that site, and so, according to the Planning Department, they have been in violation of the current zoning.
That is correct, that's why they're here to rezone.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Strike, Mr. Walker?
Did Hal leave already?
No, he's over here.
Oh, okay, because Hal and I have been, we've talked about this issue at length, and I was going to basically get asked the same question, is this the Band-Aid for this problem that Hal and I have been talking about for a while now, and we've talked specifically about this property on a number of occasions, and I guess my question for Hal, is this the fix? Is this kind of the ultimate fix for all these medical office uses in the I-1 district, then, is just a rezone to be through?
Yes, rezoning is correct.
That's correct, that's the approach that we're taking at this point.
Okay. Are you suggesting that there are a lot of existing uses, medical uses within the I-1?
There is, there's a number of them, I mean, I could start counting them off.
And your interest is not on this lot in particular, it's on the topic generally?
Well, I own a site that is, to some degree, is impacted by this, but there, but I don't have a medical office building on it yet, although we thought about putting one on it. But my interest was, I was selling one of the units that's on this site, and then we got balled up into this discussion of other sites that are impacted by it.
Is that a disclosure you want to make on this case?
No, I don't think I have any disclosures, because I sold the unit, and that's long gone.
That's in the past, okay, I just want to make sure.
Then the matter has passed. But I guess what I'm, what I'm really driving at here is rezoning every one of these things just seems a little clumsy and expensive, so is this, is there some assistance being given to the developer to rezone this? I mean, is the city taking on some of that burden, or is this all being shifted onto the shoulders of the developers to handle this stuff?
You know, the proper procedure is to rezone the property. What you're asking kind of is, should we look at allowing chiropractor offices in the I-1? And the policy of the Planning Department has been, no, we want to rezone these properties, B3.
So, okay, so basic, but, the Planning Department has already approved a number of these uses on I-1 zone lots, I guess that's what I'm getting at, is that we're rolling back the clock a little bit, I mean, these uses were approved, and now they're not, they're unapproved. Or you're trying, you're basically taking it back, right?
Well, I think we need to separate out the building departments, if they got a valid tenant improvement, so when they come in, they're supposed to get a tenant improvement, and that's supposed to be looked at in the building department. However, there's cases out there where, you know, these strip malls, they came in and just, they did not get tenant improvement permits, and they're just operating. So, you know, each case has to be looked at separately.
Okay.
So, can I just jump in here for a second, because I want to make sure I understand it? We have an existing building that's been approved under the existing zoning.
Correct.
That a tenant of the new building came in for a tenant, a permit related to tenant improvements, and at that point in time, someone in the, at the permit counter said, this is a medical-related use, and that's not allowed in the I-1 district.
That is correct.
So, otherwise, an office building is allowed in the I-1 district, but specifically, a medical office is not.
Yes.
And so, anybody that comes in related to a medical use of an office, an existing office, for a TI is required to rezone the entire property? Even if they're one user?
In order to be consistent with the, this is Hal, in order to be consistent, you would, you're right. So, what was happening is, the front counter was approving these without checking with the zoning previously. So, that's why we created a class of uses out there, and we're trying to rectify that now.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Walker.
So, I guess here's what I'm, this is my, this is really what I've been driving at, this is my big question. Why aren't we just making medical office use legal in the new I-1 zoning? Wouldn't that be easier? I mean, or is there some particular reason why medical office should not be allowed in I-1 district when regular office uses are?
How the direction, right now, the plan is to not, I mean, we'd have, that would be a zoning change that would have to go through, we'd have to look at that as far as, is that a use that we want in the I-1? And right now, the answer is no.
So, to the Chair again, is there a list of reasons why the answer is no? That's always confused me, I guess I'd love to know what that is.
Let me do my best. The biggest reason that I've heard since I've been here, is that we want to conserve that property for the bang that you can get for your economic buck, or you don't have that many acres of industrial land, prime, good industrial land, and you can get significant number of jobs out of that, that pay a very high wage, if all things line up right, all the oranges line up, that's what can happen. So, we are trying to conserve those lands where that's happened, but what we're finding is that there are places out there, especially close to community centers, that have seen this pressure for offices occur, but it's not uniform across the entire district, it's occurring in places. So, we are trying to address both the administrative process problem that created some of these, as well as a trend that we are seeing out there near neighborhood centers.
All right, thanks. I guess I'll just say on record, this, to me, this feels like we're going to have to do this a dozen more times to fix this problem, versus if we just came up with a Band-Aid, you know, some kind of a fix for the code, and then it can stay I-1, and if they, if somebody wants to use it for industrial later, they can, but now we're effectively taking this off the map as I-1, and now, you know, you'll have to rezone it to I-1 if you want to use it for industrial. So, it seems almost like it's worse now for the, you know, the people that are concerned about scarcity of industrial land. So, anyway, I know you guys are working hard on it, I'm not trying to be critical, but I just.
Well, I think you were critical, and I think it's up to us to decide whether or not your criticism is well-founded, and I recommend that you bring those findings back when we get into our actual deliberations, if you choose to do so. Ms. Bailey, question?
The Chair, I was essentially going to echo the same questions, it seems as though we have a trend of not having enough industrial space already, and if there are a lot of these spots that we're just going to be going through and changing them, that's not going to encourage our industrial, which seems to be the end goal of this. So, it seems to be that what we're hoping to do today is to preserve industrial space, but we're really just setting up a trend to take it away. Is that all a concern of the planning staff?
Through the Chair, Ms. Bailey, well, I believe you'd have to look at it at case-by-case basis. As you can see here, this is near the town center. The other location that I know of that you may be seeing in the future for a rezone is totally, you would not want industrial uses, it's zoned I-1, but it's all commercial right now. So, it's really case-by-case. As Hal mentioned, though, yes, we want to preserve the industrial land, however, some of these, it makes more sense to, for it to go to the B3.
Just a follow-up question, is there any worry about inconsistency on what we, as the Plannings, the Planning and Zoning Commission, is supposed to do, that if we see a trend that is kind of something faulty, balancing that between being unfair to an applicant, it kind of seems like it's putting us in a hard spot on either deciding the right overall policy, or putting an applicant who has essentially been put in a hard place, to no fault of their own, in an even harder place?
I think that's a balancing test, and that staff is bringing that forward as best we can, when, as soon as we discovered that situation, we're trying to, we're trying to put the best face on the situation that was given to us in this process, so.
Thank you.
Before I go to Mr. Spohays, you know, there's very few industrial uses that are listed in the code. What were the uses that you thought, the city thought were going to be the uses when they issued a building permit for the building?
Through the Chair, Mr. Robinson, or Mr. Chair, you know, I don't know all the exact particulars, but I believe when this building was built, the question was asked on the permit, before it was, you know, they were given their permit, what is this going to be? And it was a commercial building, to my knowledge, however, then when they gave the, they received a couple tenant improvements for the property, and it just, it wasn't caught by the reviewer. And then they came in with a third or a fourth tenant improvement, and that's when it was caught.
Okay.
So, I think it was just a error in the permitting process where they just didn't review it for the specific tenant improvement, they were still just going on the fact that it was a newly constructed building.
Okay, Mr. Spohays?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. When I originally requested to speak, a lot of the points are kind of covered, and I really don't have a dog in this fight, but I echo Commissioner Bailey's remarks, she used so well, particularly put it, inconsistency is this going forward. A little personal knowledge on this property is that before it was even constructed, the broker was marketing it as medical office space, as they identified that that would be the highest and best use for this property. Now- Now, does the broker have to go through and take a look at what zoning regulations are?
No, you know what, Mr. Spohays, I don't find that relevant here. I think that if a broker wants to market something as completely inconsistent, then, you know, hopefully, a buyer has enough sense to find someone that actually knows what's going on. I don't think there's any requirement for a broker to know anything about zoning when they market properties because I frankly see it all the time.
I agree. I agree with you completely. And I thank you for making that point. I guess where I was going with this is that the building might have been constructed for office space, but it was, it was filled up with medical office tenants which are in violation and marketed as such. And then also, my biggest thing is just the inconsistencies of what's going to happen on the landlord's side of trying to put medical office-
Do you have a question for staff now, Mr. Spohays? Because that's where we're at. We're asking questions of staff. If you don't, you can save that for the deliberation. So where we're at right now is if you have questions of staff, please ask it. Otherwise, we're going to go to the petitioner.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, for my absence last time. I totally forgot how this goes. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Could we ask that the petitioner come forward, please, Mr. Dreier? You have 10 minutes and let us know also how much time you'd like for rebuttal.
Three minutes, please.
I think you got a taste of our questions of you, so.
Oh, just a little bit, I guess.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Tom Dreier, spelled D-R-E-Y-E-R. And with me tonight is Brandon Markot with Triad answering engineering questions and Brian Harton with Holquist. We concur with the planning staff's recommendations and all of which we can say on the case begins on our submitted narrative that starts on page 16 of your packet. I think I'll just dive right into what you guys were talking about. And I think it's really important to look on page 43 of your packet. That's the end of a pretty lengthy analysis by Long Range Planning of this rezoning and their final recommendation summary says, "The rezone seeks to resolve existing land use associated with the subject property." So they are more consistent with market realities of the proposed draft land use plan map pending. Subject to its adoption, the near future, the draft land use plan designates areas a town center which recognizes medical office land uses. Again, on balance, a rezone will improve overall land use patterns in this section of South Anchorage. And their recommendation, of course, supports the rezone request as submitted and recommends approval of the rezone application and request. After four pages of analysis, I obviously don't need to go over that. On June 1st, we held a pre-application meeting. June 27th, we held a community meeting. There was no community members that showed up. There's been no objections anywhere from the community or anyone has written into the planning department. So the zoning before the original I-1 in old code, there actually was some ambiguity and it's very easy to read it, to say that you can put in professional medical offices because it allows professional offices. Then you go to the definitions in Title 21, old Title 21. And under that was listed medical. So there is a way to get there to make it ambiguous. New code, however, in I-1, it's very distinct. They're not allowed, curbed. So, and as far as the issue of taking I-1 property away from areas that may need it, I think it's pretty obvious just by looking at the maps that we submitted and the analysis by Long Range Planning that this particular location is not suited for industrial zoning property. It's an odd shape. It's surrounded by businesses. It's within the town center zone. It's not appropriate. There's a lot of places where I-1 shouldn't be filled up with Cabela's and Walmarts and things like that. But set up along the C Street corridor and places like that where a large industrial business can't actually move in, produce jobs and things like that. So with that, I think I'm just going to stop here and take any questions.
I think that's why, and I think if you've heard the conversation, frankly, I think it's more about how we got here than about the application. So I just want to be clear on that, at least that's my point of view right now.
Okay.
So just a question before I go to Mr. Walker. The building was permitted under the old code or the new code?
Old code.
And so your testimony is that the uses that were proposed under the old code when the building was permitted were not out of whack with what the code allowed you to do? Maybe there was some dispute as to whether, that's where you make the statement, whether it was appropriate or not, or allowable or not? It's more related to the old code, not the new code, right?
Yes, the new code is very distinct, not allowed. Old code, well, it was allowed if you read it in a certain way. There were some pluses and minuses and obviously, the building department read it the way-
But general office was allowed in I-1 under the old code? Is that right?
General office.
Professional office?
That's correct.
The professional office, we conceivably have a lot of professional office buildings in the I-1 right now, existing. But under the new code, you come in a TI for a medical office, they're not going to be allowed unless you want to rezone the entire parcel-
That's correct.
-to B3. None of that makes sense to me, but thank you for clarifying. I got two other questions for you. One, first from Mr. Walker.
So I think we clarified, it was permitted under the old code. There is ambiguity in the old code. I think it was allowed under the old code. There's other properties. I don't want to keep you or me from going home to our families deliberating this bigger issue, but just for, I'm going to have some comments here when we wrap up. So would you guys be rezoning this property if it wasn't for this issue with the new Title 21? So I mean, if the new Title 21 didn't raise some question about the legality of medical office use on this property, would you guys be bothering to rezone to B3 or would you just leave it as I-1?
Well, in new code, there's no ambiguity. It's very distinctly not allowed.
The property was originally permitted under old code, though, right?
Right, yeah. And they developed five of the condos, were completely built out and then there was three remaining that went in for permits and this happened.
Right, I'm aware of that. So I guess what I'm getting at is if it wasn't for this issue and the new code, is there any other reason why you would be rezoning to B3? Or would you just be continuing the status quo, which is to develop this I-1 property with these uses?
So the question, if we were allowed to develop the medical in the existing code, no, we wouldn't need to have the rezoning.
Right, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Ms. Barker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In the same spirit, I don't want to have us here all night, but I am curious what the expense has been to the owner of having to go through this process.
Well, I'm charging by the second right now, so it's getting bigger as we talk. The actual expense?
Round numbers, I'm just-
Brian, do you want to? Brian Harton of Holquist.
State your name for the-
Brian Harton, H-A-R-T-D-N. And I didn't review the invoicing prior to coming here, but I think we're 20,000-ish right now. And the MOA graciously waived the application fee for this specific case since it was kind of an easy fix, so to speak, for this. So that's where we're at.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barker. Any other questions? Hearing none, what's the will of the body? Unless you got a rebuttal, Tom?
I guess just one-
Yeah, sorry.
-short thing is that if any issues come up in your deliberation, I'd really appreciate that as petitioners, we would be allowed to respond to say some kind of limitation if it was added or anything else.
I promise you, if we decide to load up with special limitations, we'll call you back up. Is that a deal?
Yes, thank you.
With that, I'd like to close the public hearing. What's the wish of the body, Mr. Strike?
Yes, in the matter of case number 2016-0094, I request to rezone approximately 2.94 acres from I-1 Light Industrial District to B3 General Business. I move that we approve this rezoning request. And in regards to the, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Strike. Seconded by Mr. Walker. Go ahead and speak to your motion.
I'm frustrated at the process. I think we've heard from, and we may hear from some others, but we've put a Band-Aid on a situation that will probably come up again. We have taken some industrial land out of the queue, so to speak. There's still one single undeveloped lot. But understanding that we're in a town zone center, I hear that, but I also know the property immediately to the west, we have a rail line. We have an airstrip on the other side of the rail line. We've got a whole corridor down further south on the same side of the street that's I-1. And so pulling this out and allowing it, I think there would probably be a better shortcut way to solve where you're at with the development of the property for the medical piece. But I see where we're at. I don't like where we're at, but I can get behind it.
Thank you, Mr. Strike. Ms. Bailey.
First off, I'm going to vote to approve this motion. But just for common sake, I also am disappointed in the process. The one thing I disagree in the applicant's statement is that they said that this property is not suitable for industrial for the reasons that Commissioner Strike outlined. I think it is suitable for industrial and it's a shame that it's being taken away for kind of a technicality. And if the MOA is waiving the fee because it's an easy fix, it seems kind of silly that we aren't doing an administrative easy fix for this rather than piecemealing, going through and trying to correct this. There's the time involved, the expense involved. And so that's something that concerns me. And also, I'm really concerned as a commissioner trying to not disadvantage an applicant that comes in for something that they were abiding by the old code and then because it's getting changed, they're now being disadvantaged. And I know it's going to be hard for me to reconcile that and I know that you're saying that we should do that case-by-case, but I think that's, it could potentially be a very easy decision, but we don't know that. And it seems as though there's an acceptance that this was some sort of mistake and some sort of technicality. And so it's hard for me to be okay with that process moving forward when there could be a location that isn't right to change that into a B3 district for the future of Anchorage. And so that's something that concerns me. But as to this specific piece, I think the applicant's met the baseline requirements and I will be moving to approve it. However, it's the, more the circumstances around it that have me concerned.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. Mr. Kange.
Thank you. Through the chair, I'm going to present some findings for this case and then I, too, am going to put some thoughts on the record with regard to this. You know, I'm for this fix. I'm going to vote for the motion. I think the property, where it sits, I drive by this property every day, sometimes twice a day. I've seen the building. I've seen it being marketed as office condos for sale. Having said that, I'm going to vote in favor of the motion. I feel that the proposed rezone, because it's located within a town center, some of the standards have been met specifically, actually, I'm going to say all the standards have been met. I'm going to pick out a couple of standards. It's not adversely affected by the Anchorage 2020 Comprehensive Plan. I feel that the property is generally consistent with the zoning within the surrounding areas. And as I mentioned, I will vote in favor of my motion. However, I think that going forward, it would be an easier solution to allow the three types of tenants that are already in the facility to be located in I-1 districts because we are coming, we hear quite a bit, as good with the land use ban plan, we hear from staff and Long Range Planning, how the lack of industrial land in Anchorage Bowl is really affecting our growth in industrial opportunities. And taking this away goes against that, so that's my two cents.
Thank you, Mr. Walker.
I think most of what I have to say has already been said, but I'll be supporting the motion. I think there's no reason not to rezone this particular parcel to B3, but I definitely have some pretty serious objections to this rezoning or rezoning any property as a fix for this problem. I can't understand why we would allow other office uses but not medical office uses in I-1, especially when we have lots of I-1 on major thoroughfares and places where it's mixed with B3. And this just seems like a really clumsy fix to the problem. And I guess I'd like to see us come up with a better solution, so.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Mr. Strike.
Yes, as an additional finding to note, that this was a public hearing. We had no public testimony for or against. And that the mailings, we're also met with no comments, but we did have a letter of non-objection from the Old Shore Ocean View Community Council. And I think that's an important note in this area for the, where this piece of property is located, in the town center area for that area.
Thank you, Mr. Strike. I'd like to add that, you know, we have an issue of industrial land in town. That said, you're always going to make decisions as to what ought to be the appropriate zoning. And I think, as we'll see in the land use plan map, which couldn't come soon enough, frankly, that this is appropriate for commercial. But the thing I want to leave with, and I will support this, the thing I want to leave with is what's unusual in this case is that it's a new building. But we've got many, many, many buildings that were built as office buildings in the I-1 zoning district that when they come forward for tenant improvements, will then be told that they're not allowed uses. So what do you do with a building that's not appropriate for manufacturing or government services or whatever the heck the uses are in I-1? What do you do? I mean, what's striking is how new this building is. But if we really are going to force people into a rezoning to reuse a perfectly good building that was built for an office use, it strikes me as a really bad form of government and process. So please, what I ask is that within a month, you come back and tell us what we're going to do in these cases so that we don't start seeing them. Because unless I'm missing something here, it's not you guys, but I want to figure out a process that we can tell people that we're not getting people stuck just because they're going in, making an investment to do a TI. With that, please vote. This case is approved. Good luck on your painless process through the assembly. We hope they don't remand you back here for something else. Thank you for your time here this evening and sorry you caught me on a grouchy day. So motion to adjourn, Mr. Strike, seconded by Mr. Walker. Thank you.